On Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, we usually meet on Tuesdays, but last night was national night out. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to head over to the casements, but what an incredible turnout by our police department, our fire department, with an assist from our leisure services folks, and the community showed up in droves, which was fantastic for a really, really special night. It seems like it gets better every year. We've outgrown the Novo Community Center, and now we're in the casements, and the weather held out as well. So, thank you to everyone who was involved in that and made it a success. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight. As I call this meeting to order, I want to recognize our greeters, Public Works Deputy Public Works Director Kevin Gray, and Police Captain Chris Ruse, served as our greeters this evening. I'm going to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, is Justin Isaac's Recording Secretary. Next is City Clerk Susan Daederis. Then we have Zone One Commissioner Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, welcome.
To my left and your right, we have Zone Three Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
And then our Deputy Mayor and Zone Four Commissioner Harold Bryley.
Good evening, everyone, welcome.
Then we have City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Sean Finley, and in the audience is Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and then City Attorney Randy Hayes, and then way to my left, I see our Fire Chief Howard Bailey, and in the back is Police Chief Jesse Godfrey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington, and if you would, at this time, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation given by Reverend Larry Temple from Life Community Church.
Dear Lord, we thank you for your presence in this place, for wisdom, for peace, for order, not only for these affairs that transpire here, but for our city in general. Thank you for your protection and wisdom as we go forth through these days. Everyone in agreement, say amen.
Amen.
My condolences to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As many of you know, who come here regularly, particularly staff, this is a special time of the meeting where we take an opportunity to recognize exceptional people in our community and exceptional events that are happening in our community. Ormond Beach is an incredible city because we have great residents, great neighborhoods, great activities, and we're blessed in that regard. Our first recognition tonight is a proclamation for retiring Judge, Judge Terry Perkins, and I'll ask Judge Perkins to come up. Your Honor, thank you for being here, sir. I saw an article yesterday online written by Flat County Judge Andrea Totten. Before I read the proclamation, I just wanted to pull a couple quotes out of that because it was so eloquently written. Judge Totten considers Judge Perkins a mentor to her. She worked for him in the Civil Division, I believe, as a law clerk here in Daytona Beach. And what she wrote here is that the same characteristics that had made Judge Perkins such a great mentor to me, Judge Totten, are those that make him a great judge and administrator. He understands that there can be more than one approach to a problem, that different people, and she writes, and judges are people too, can see the same facts through different lenses, that all of us make mistakes sometimes despite our best efforts, and that none of us has all the answers. Another quote she said was, "As a mentor, Judge Perkins' temperament was his most important quality." What was so important to her in her new responsibilities as a judge was that Judge Perkins' calming influence, his wit, and his good humor that she learned from working with him. So, really, just an incredible testament to the great man that he is. And, Your Honor, I'm going to present you with this proclamation and ask that you hold it while I read it. Whereas, a native Floridian and graduate of Seabreeze High School, Judge Terrence R. Perkins proudly earned both his bachelor's and jurist degrees from the University of Florida, Juris Doctor, from the University of Florida, graduating with honors. Admitted to the Florida Bar in 1981, he devoted 30 years to practicing law, representing a diverse array of individuals and corporate clients across the state as a board-certified civil trial lawyer. And whereas, prior to his judicial appointment in 2010, Judge Perkins was a founding shareholder and director of Smith, Hood, Perkins, Stout, Bigman, and Brock, PA, where he excelled in personal injury and insurance defense. His exceptional legal expertise earned him an AV preeminent ranking for professional ability and ethics for Martindale-Hubble Attorney Reviews and Ratings, a distinction that he maintained for over 15 years. And whereas, upon joining the Circuit Court, Judge Perkins handled a wide variety of cases, including civil, criminal, drug, and mental health matters, ensuring justice was served with fairness and diligence. His commitment to teamwork and justice earned him the respect of his peers, leading to his election as Chief Judge of the Seventh Judicial Circuit in both 2013 and 2015, where he directed case assignments and upheld justice across four counties. And whereas, during his tenure as Chief Judge, he spearheaded the transition from paper to electronic files, making the court more efficient and accessible. He also expanded his expertise by serving on esteemed committees, including the Florida Courts Technology Commission and the Executive Committee of the Florida Conference of Circuit Court Judges. And whereas, deeply committed to his community, Judge Perkins has coached youth sports in Ormond Beach, served as a deacon at Christ Presbyterian Church, and has been an active member of several other local organizations. And whereas, the city of Ormond Beach is immensely grateful to Judge Perkins' dedication, leadership, and contributions to the judiciary field and the community, we wish him all the best as he embarks on this journey to enjoy the fruits of his well-earned retirement, pursuing woodworking, flying his plane, and exploring the world. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2024, as a day to recognize and honor Judge Terrence R. Perkins in the city of Ormond Beach, and encourage all city staff and residents to join me in expressing congratulations and gratitude for his service and dedication to our community. Congratulations. Don't go anywhere. Now, this is the part where we say, but wait, there's more. Your Honor, because you had such an exceptional career, because you are our local jurist, made good, everybody's so proud of you. I think Commissioner Persis actually was a schoolmate, if I remember correctly.
That's down the street, too.
Awesome. Good stuff. But we wanted to present you with a key to the city of Ormond Beach. All right. It also happens to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month, with a judicial theme, and I would ask Courtney Frain, Daisy Gonzalez, and Emma Sanders to come forward, if y'all are here. Thank you, guys. No, that's perfect. Whereas, domestic violence includes violent or aggressive behavior within the home that targets a member of one's immediate family and undermines the very foundation of our communities. And whereas, domestic violence devastates relationships, disrupts lives, and erodes the core unit of society, the family. Homes should be sanctuaries of comfort and stability, where love and mutual respect flourish. Instead, domestic violence creates environments fraught with fear and danger, leaving individuals in unsafe situations. And whereas, domestic violence affects individuals across all income levels, races, genders, and socioeconomic backgrounds, women still make up a disproportionately higher number of victims of domestic violence, with nearly half of female homicide victims being killed by a current or former male partner. And whereas, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, a time to renew the city's commitment to ending this cycle of abuse, this year, the theme Heal, Hold, and Center emphasizes the need to heal from violence and oppression, hold space for survivors, and center those most marginalized. And whereas, Ormond Beach is a vibrant city with over 44,000 residents and more than 5 million guests annually, extends and reaffirms unconditional compassion, respect, support, and protection to victims and survivors, holding perpetrators accountable, and providing hope to those in unsafe and unstable living conditions. Now therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, on behalf of our entire commission, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Ormond Beach, and urge all residents, agencies, and champions to support efforts preventing and ending domestic violence. Thank you all very much for being here. Chief, Chief Godfrey, Captain Ruse, if you guys will come up for the picture, Captain Smith as well.
Hello, everyone. I'm Emma Sanders from Domestic Abuse Council of Volusia. I'm the Outreach Manager. A couple things. I just want to invite you all to our 5K Run, Walk Run, on October 19th. If you follow our social media, we do have a registration link for that 5K Walk link. You can donate, you don't have to run. Also, we have a town hall next week, Monday, October 7th, at 8:00, at Brown &amp; Brown. So, please join us for a very important discussion about the dynamics of domestic violence. We have Chief Jukari Young that's joining us, and also State Attorney Arjay Larissa on the panel with our CEO.
We'll put it on the internet. We'll post it on social media so everybody knows. But yes, thank you all for being here, and thank you for recognizing this month. Good to see you. All right. Last, but certainly not least, if Chief Bailey, come forward. That's wonderful. That is wonderful. Bring your team up. It is Fire Prevention Week, and we try not to miss. Every year, I think, we recognize Fire Prevention Week and the important week that you guys do every week, men and women of the Ormond Beach Fire Department. And so, I'm proud to present this proclamation. Whereas, the city of Ormond Beach's Fire Department is dedicated to reducing home fires and injuries through prevention and education. Aligning the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. And whereas, working smoke alarms are essential for alerting residents to fire, significantly increasing survival chances, modern homes burn hotter and faster due to the synthetic materials used, limiting escape time to just two to three minutes. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, states, "Smoke alarms reduce the risk of fatality in home fires by over 50 percent, yet three out of five fire deaths occur in homes without functioning smoke alarms." And whereas, every household should ensure smoke alarms are installed in sleeping areas and consider automatic sprinkler systems in high rises. And whereas, residents should take proactive measures, such as testing smoke and carbon monoxide alarms monthly, and participating in community outreach programs to promote fire safety, Fire Prevention Week provides an opportunity to educate families on creating fire escape plans and ensuring their smoke alarms are operational. And whereas, we honor the brave first responders and firefighters who risk their lives for our safety, and remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim October 6th through October 12th as Fire Prevention Week in our city, and urge all residents to implement preventative measures within their homes and support public safety efforts promoting fire safety awareness. Thank you all very much. Audience remarks. Ms. Jennifer Bright will be first up. Ms. Bright, you have three minutes.
Well, I was concerned about a couple of things on the consent agenda because they weren't very transparent to the people reading the agenda. For example, 172 referenced an auto renewal that you had to dig back into contract back from 2021, and I had to pester my councilmen to find out what the dollar amounts were, because there was no current listing for how much it was going to cost. We had to go back to look at the 2021, and supposedly, I want to make sure it's in the record that, God forbid, we need to use those resources. They weren't paying the rates that are in the 21 contracts. That's what I've been told, that that's what they were, that they aren't going up. Also, the city puts in an example on Item O and P that the staff report. We can view the city manager's staff report to see the information related to those items, and the links in the website are over a year behind. Hopefully, the city can get all these things corrected so they'll be more transparent in what they're doing and what the city is spending our tax dollars on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Connie Colby.
Good evening. Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane in Ormond Beach. First of all, I would like to acknowledge Kelly McGuire. She was so sweet last two weeks ago. She walked me out to my car when you had thousands of people here, and every car between here and there was a big pickup truck. You had to park all the way over by the library, and I couldn't see anything in the dark. Two weeks ago, you had the item on the agenda about landing fees at the airport. To me, I thought that was a no-brainer. Yay, let's finally do something about paying back the money that they owe to the general fund. I've since talked to a couple of people whose opinions I respect, and I guess there's more to the story that I don't understand, but I hope that this will be some way of looking at different ways to pay that money back and keep this going as an open plan for doing something up there. And looking around, I also see that many of the airports around this area are considering that 3% landing fee, so it's going to be kind of a troubled area to work with, I guess. I saw a lot of different ways of doing that, too. They were talking about maybe giving discounts to the schools for the landing fees. And I don't know about the other things, like if you buy a gallon of gas, you don't have to pay a landing fee. They had different scenarios out there that need to be looked at, too. But please include the public in this discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cynthia Costa.
Hi. I'm Cindy Costa, 6 Wogan Lane, Ormond Beach. I'm here for some of my friends who don't come to these meetings, but would like to talk about these homes that are abandoned. I have three homes on three different streets that are going to be causing problems. And here's the first one. And these people in that neighborhood won't call code enforcement because they are required to leave their name, and when the neighbors call in, they find out who calls, and they wind up fighting each other. There's this one at 170 Putnam. It looks abandoned. The pool water is completely black. The screens over the pool, you know what I'm talking about, are gone. The frames are there. That's dangerous. And there's a car that has been parked there that has not been moved, at least for one year, that the vines from the driveway are growing into the car. There's another one at 103 Lincoln. That also looks abandoned. The trees and the vegetation are growing over the complete right-hand side of the house, over the windows and up onto the roof. And the last one is 978 Parkwood. It looks abandoned and unkept. This, to me, why doesn't code enforcement see this? How can we say Ormond Beach is charming when we cut? Some child can walk in there and drown in their pool. There's no screens around it. That's bad, and very, very dangerous. Okay, another thing is, I complained last time I was here about the roots that are growing under the road on North Beach Street, but I was told that is not our problem here. But Sean, I talked to Sean, and he said it was, I think he said it was county. He was going to call me back on a Monday because he was going to proceed calling them and keeping on them. I have never heard another word, and it's still there. And I know Sean had his men go out and see it and said, yes, it is dangerous. But he can't do it because it's not his problem. So, if you could have Sean call me back and give me some numbers to call to the county. Is that who I called, the county?
That would be in my guesses.
Yeah. I would appreciate that.
My guess is he's already done that, but yes, ma'am. We'll have him call you back.
Thank you. Do I leave these addresses here, or?
Sure. You can. If you'll give them to the clerk, she'll record them and make sure the right folks get them.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We did reach out to the county. We're trying to get it in motion and try and get it taken care of. Again, our hands are tied with what we can do, but we're continuing to urge them to get it done as quickly as we can.
They're going to take care of it?
We're trying to get them to do it. I can't make them get out there and do it, but we're urging them as often as much as we can.
Well, can I have a phone number so I can call them?
I will gladly get you some numbers.
That's an accident waiting to happen.
I'll get you some app numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Commission, approval of the minutes from the regular city commission meeting of September 18th, 2024. They've been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Move approval.
Second.
Would it be seconded? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. We are now on the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Would it be seconded? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Gent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Would any commissioners like to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to comment on P, the Temporary Information Technology Staff. And I think this, it's great that we're moving this forward, and I think this ties into what Mrs. Bright was talking about, transparency, updating our technology, our website, our social media, technology in the chambers, speakers, so everyone can hear, see, and find information more easily accessible, I guess I should say. So, I think this is a step in the right direction for what you're looking for. This was one of my initial platforms I ran on two years ago, and it's nice to see that within the first two years, it's getting implemented. So, thank you.
Nice. Commissioner Persis?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on Item C. I'm very excited that, you know, we're replacing this major force main crossing and expansion, and we are increasing our reclaimed water system to new customers. I think that's great for our city, so just wanted to comment on that.
And good for the environment.
And good for the environment, that's right.
Absolutely. Commissioner Talland?
And mine is just a general comment. I had reached out to staff. I was just a little concerned and questioned why we, quite a few items, we were voting on for a sole-source provider. And, you know, theoretically, I felt that that was wrong, that we should always bid things out for a higher-ticket item, but I was told, and I agree, that this is a very special, most of these were very specialized services, and it just made sense to do it that way. So, I just thought I would just point that out.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. And I think a lot of people agree with you. Obviously, we like to bid when we can. There's just certain areas where there's no other product that will work, and so we're stuck.
Correct.
This is the right way to do it. We This is the right way to do it. We advertise it, we let people know.
Right.
Give people the opportunity to come and say, oh, we found this other person that's doing it. You know, they're in California, but maybe you should think about it, whatever the situation. But that's the right process to follow. So Joyce, thank you and your staff for doing that.
Yeah.
And thank you for bringing it up. I just wanted to comment on K, the contract with Crowder Golf. I'm so proud of staff for making sure that those contracts are in place so that, you know, we dodged a bullet this last week with the storm that came through and caused so many problems on the West Coast and up in Western Carolina. And we didn't have to have a contract in place, but when it's in place and you have an event and these folks know that we need them, we've paid for them, we're solid in our ability to perform on the contract, and they'll come to us first versus cities throughout the state who don't have a contractor in place. Their residents can wait months for this debris to be cleared, whereas in a matter of days usually after the event, our roads are starting to be cleaned up already. And it's because of the forward-thinking work of staff to put these contracts in place with reputable firms, and I'm grateful for that. So that's all I had. Commissioner Persis? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to add on to what you were saying. One of my residents called after the storm, and we did have a few trees down. I don't think anyone got too much damage, but that tree was removed within three hours. And that's how quick everybody works. So these people couldn't get out of their street, but they were able to get out in three hours. So that's just wonderful. What a tribute to our workers and our staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And if there's nothing else on the consent agenda, we'll move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and we'll start with 8A.
Ordinance number 2024-26, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, Article 4, Conditional and Special Exception Regulations, Section 2-57, Criteria for Review of Specific, Conditional, and Special Exception, Subsection 37, Houses of Worship of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the conditions for houses of worship, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-26, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. This is a second reading, and I don't have any cards.
Mr. Mayor, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2024-27, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Bradford Lake subdivision shown within Phase 4 of the Plantation Oaks planned residential development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-27, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this second reading either.
I move approval of ordinance number 2024-27.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? I'll just say, I appreciate that we put these in the public hearing section and do give our residents a chance to speak on them. I notice a lot of governmental agencies put these on consent, and people never have the chance to even comment. So that's a transparency measure that our city goes through, and I've always been proud of that. If there's nothing further, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2024-28, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Bradford Park subdivision, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-28, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2024-29, an ordinance changing the name of Halifax Street to Cliffhaven Court and then Tansas Street to Ridge Haven Avenue, said streets being located in the Ridge Haven subdivision area, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for transmittal and recording in the public records of Volusia County and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2024-29, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8E.
Resolution number 2024-176, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution and issuance of a public art order approving an original public art project titled "Greetings from Ormond Beach" on the west-facing wall of the building located at 200 East Granada Boulevard. In accordance with Chapter 18 Public Arts Program in the Downtown Overly District of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances, authorizing the execution of a license agreement for the public art between the city and MDSS Inc., accepting the donation of the public art from MDSS Inc. and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-176, read by title only.
Thank you. And I will ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak briefly on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, planning director. This is a request for public art within our downtown Overly District. The property is at 200 East Granada, and the mural is planned on the western wall. The Swillerbee's Donut Shop is located right here. The public art went to the Ormond Beach Art District Board, and they had a healthy discussion as was included in the minutes. They suggested some changes to the second O and the last D, and the applicant and the artist agreed to it. So they've made some change based on the Art District Board. Both the property owner and applicant are here, as well as the artist. The Art District Board unanimously recommended approval, and staff is also recommending approval.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Deputy Mayor Riley?
Actually, not a question, Mr. Mayor, but just more of a comment.
Yes, sir.
I got to say, this is probably one of the neatest-looking murals I've seen. I love how it incorporates the history of our city into the mural, and kudos to Mr. Selby and the artist. Thank you.
Yep, I loved it, too. Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, I just think, I don't know, the audience, I just blew it up on my iPad. It's just amazing. I know it's up there, but I just love it. And I agree with what Deputy Mayor Riley said. I think it's so representative of our city. I think it's fabulous, and I'm so excited to see it displayed.
Thank you. Commissioner Talland?
Yeah, I just reiterate what you all said, but also what I want to add is the fact that it did go through our, not our, but the arts board. And that's why we have advisory boards. They provide good valuable input, and those changes that were suggested make sense. And so I'm really proud of the process, and I really do like the fact that it's very inviting, and it does add to the charm of our downtown area. So thank you, Mr. Selby, for doing that. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be last, I guess, but kudos, Commissioner Selby. This is a great addition, and your building looks fantastic after the severe damage that has sustained during the last hurricane. And I'm sure you're obviously happy to have it up and running, and this is just a welcoming addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwight Selby, 200 East Granada, Ormond Beach. Travis, we miss you as a tenant. You used to be a tenant in the building. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Randy Hayes because I had this concept actually when I was sitting in that chair, so it's been three or four years ago that when it first came up with the idea, which is not an original idea. You see murals like this all over the country. However, our mural ordinance prohibits words. And so Mr. Hayes came up with the license agreement, public art process. And so the city will actually own this artwork, and they're licensing, you know, we're licensing the space. We're going to pay for it, and we're creating it at your discretion and under your guidelines. So we're very excited to do it. We hope that a lot of people will take pictures in front of it, and they'll post it on social media, and a lot of people will say, wow, I wish I was in Ormond Beach instead of shoveling snow here in Chicago or Michigan or wherever they're from. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. And the artist, Sean Johnson, is here.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to introduce.
Yeah, Sean, if you can stand up. And of course, he was approved by the arts district. That's part of the process. The artists, their work have to be approved by the arts district. And he's committed to begin producing the artwork very shortly, within a week or 10 days. So hopefully, we'll have it done soon. Thank you.
And I just want to say, Commissioner Selby, I see this on note cards, postcards. I mean, I see it can go on mugs. I mean, I just see this going viral. So it's going to be so exciting.
Randy, who gets the licensing rights? Oh, yeah. Oh, well, thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You, too. Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, other discussions? I'll move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we will close the public hearings, move now to reports, suggestions, and requests, starting with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
First of all, I want to remind you that, I probably don't need to remind the mayor, but Tuesday, October 15th is the mayor's last meeting. And so we wish you great success, Mr. Mayor, and we're going to miss your leadership here. And you were instrumental in hiring me here in the city of Ormond Beach, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Best decision I ever made, one of them. Top five.
On Wednesday, October, I mean, November the 6th, the meeting will be moved to Wednesday due to Election Day. So November 6th is our meeting date, the first meeting in November. And then Tuesday, October 19th, that's the new commission's oath of office and general organizational meeting. And we'll send those dates out to you, just so you know. As you know, we had a fire in the PAC shortly after it opened, but we're down through the home stretch right now. The carpet, drywall, and paint and concession areas are all nearly finished. The upgraded fire system is being finalized, and the decorative touches like the art rail and donor wall are under construction. We remain on track for an opening in November and shows in early December, so I'm really excited about that. Coed youth basketball will be starting. You can contact the Leisure Services Department for registration, or you can register online. Movies on the Halifax will be Friday, October 4th, and that's in concert with Trunk or Treat, I believe. Is that correct? So that features Haunted Mansion at Rockefeller Gardens. The Trunk or Treat, it's free for everyone there, is sponsored and has been annually the idea of reality pros assured, and they are sponsored again this year, so we're really excited about that. Tuesday, October 15th, is Once Upon a Storytime. This is an enormously popular program. It's free for our children ages four and under, and you can enjoy a short story and a snack and just have, they usually do a craft as well. Space is extremely limited, so please call ahead. Lastly, and certainly not least, Commissioner-elect Kristen Deaton called me earlier this week and asked, how can we help with donations for the hurricane relief effort? And I explained that the city usually allows not-for-profits to step up in that role. And so she got together with Main Street, her and Michelle Pavelacqua, and they, donations can be dropped off at Ormond Main Street, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., or by appointment with Becky Parker. Monetary donations can also be made via Venmo at KADeaton3, and 100% of these donations will be used to purchase goods for those in need. We will be accepting donations through 1018 with a team headed up to North Carolina. So some of the items that they're looking for are cases of water, non-perishable foods, toiletries, diapers and wipes, towels, chainsaw, clothing, blankets, cleaning supplies, and sleeping bags. Of course, monetary donations are also accepted. You know, there but by the grace of God go we. We have been hard-hit with some storms here, but the devastation, I think, in the Carolinas and Tennessee was certainly beyond what anybody really expected up there, and it's a critical situation. We do have a few staff members that have had family members affected up there, and so we just ask you that you keep them all in your thoughts and prayers, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Joyce, commission, any questions for the city manager?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Assistant city manager Sean Finley.
Have a good night.
Thank you. City attorney Randy Hayes.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with, I've got it here, Commissioner Persis?
Oh, gee, I thought it was Commissioner Sargent. Gee, but that's fine.
Save the best for last.
Oh, that's right. Save the best for last. That's exactly right. Well, good evening, everyone. I just have a few comments for this evening. I wanted just to say, also say, National Night Out last night was absolutely fabulous, great crowd, lots of fun. DW out there, are you like sick of making hot dogs? Because you were really involved with those hot dogs. But it was just a great event, and it does seem to get better every single year, so that was just wonderful. I also wanted to say, Joe Daniels, thank you for being here. Haven't seen you here in a couple of weeks or a couple of months, so it's nice to see you sitting in the audience. Good to see you. And I'm so excited. Commissioner-elect Deaton, thank you for getting involved in these donations. It's wonderful. And I already talked to some people, and a friend of mine that's a dentist, they're already, they're going to be bringing 150 toothbrushes and toothpaste to you at Ormond Main Street, to you all. So that'll be awesome. So, and there'll be a lot more coming, I know that, but great job, great, I'm so happy that you're doing that. There is such devastation up in Tennessee and North Carolina, so that's just wonderful. And then I have a couple of requests with staff. So my first one is gentleman Tom Fitzgibbon, who lives on South St. Andrews, has again questioned about the traffic calming or speed bumps or something, and I didn't know, Sean, where we were with that.
We need permission from our consultants to take a look at our traffic calming plan. We just got a draft copy of their evaluation, so we're in the process of reviewing that. I'm hoping to get through that review and make some constructive changes to our traffic calming program. We'll bring it back to you all to make sure that we're all on the same page, and then as soon as we can, I think that that group is one of the first ones we'll want to, you know, address.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I'll let Mr. Fitzgibbons know. That's wonderful. And then my last, I have a request for the commission, and I was hoping that we could, you know, look at the tennis courts that we have, you know, right up the street on Granada that are so popular these days. I mean, the tennis courts there have been there a long time. Their clay courts are wonderful. Tennis is a great sport. It's pretty much free. You get great exercise. You're outside in the fresh air, and you, you know, have camaraderie with your teammates, and it's just a wonderful, you know, sport for all ages to participate in. And I was wondering, we had some speakers here last week, I believe her name was, let's see, what is it, Alicia, Alicia Simmons. And I was hoping that we could help direct them to do a Daytona Beach racing and recreation facilities district request and have, help her contact Barbara Kelly, who is in charge of that, because I think it's something that we really need to work on for our citizens. So many people are playing there. They have so many more teams. They need showers, they need a place where they can, you know, change and then walk down our streets, go out to lunch, just, you know, be part of the city. Visitors even play out there. So I was hoping we could talk about that real quickly.
So I also spoke with Trishna and suggested, you know, because this is similar to, I think the city leases, Trishna leases that property, please correct me if I'm wrong, and then she runs her business there. So it's, I think it's our obligation as a city to maintain that, but I talked to her about the racing district and when we did Vatner Park and we were partnering with the city, you kind of do that as a private citizen.
Right, okay.
And you do that grant thing. It's not a really difficult
No.
...application. She just needs to do it.
Right, and the next one comes up, I think January will be the next time.
There's two a year, yes. So she really needs, you know, I don't think it's fair for us to ask staff to write it for that.
No, I wasn't asking staff to write it, but just, but guidance. Just to get, help guide her and just all of us, you know, be in agreement. That's something that we are in favor of them doing and anything we can do to help.
If she reaches out to Barbara Kelly, she, Barbara will hold her hand through that process and tell you exactly what to do.
Right.
Anyway.
I believe if I'm correct that staff has to, because, staff has to apply for it because they are not a nonprofit. So I think there's
Do you know that, Joyce, Ms. Shanahan?
I don't know that, but We'll be happy to reach out to Barbara and to Trishna and help them through that process. We're not gonna write the grant, but we'll just point them in the right direction.
No, absolutely not, no.
I think others have been not-for-profit, but I just don't know the details, so I'd have to talk to Barbara Kelly.
Okay, good. Well, thank you all. I appreciate that very much. And that's all I have this evening. I hope everyone has a safe evening and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I will echo the sentiments of Commissioner Persis regarding National Night Out. It was a great event and, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the same thing. It was great. Our fine folks in uniform, Captain Smith, saw you, you and Chris Mason giving out hot dogs, saw Captain Roos out there and of course, a lot of other city staff volunteering for that. It was great to see everyone and it was just another, a great event. Commissioner Tolland and the mayor and I had the honor of attending the Halifax Health Lunch today at Halifax Hospital, which was very, very informative. A lot of the stuff they discussed kind of hits home with the mayor Partington, with his wife and myself. But it's just fantastic hearing the news about how they're teaming up with U.F. Health in the cardiovascular and cardiovascular and aneurysm field. It was just really, really good to hear and it gives us a lot of, gives us a lot of promise of the medical facilities we have here in the greater Daytona Beach area. And finally, I do know that, and I think Ms. Shanahan touched on it, you know, the next meeting is our mayor's last meeting and we're gonna miss his leadership of the City Commission. Bill, we want to thank you, obviously, for the great, you know, twenty-plus years you've put in on the City Commission and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Tolland?
I'll let Travis Sargent go before me because he was last last time. I'll be really nice. Go ahead.
He was first last time. Wow. You do want to save the best for last, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo, National Night Out was great, but in the next year, can we work on getting grilled hot dogs instead of boiled hot dogs?
I am not in charge of hot dogs.
I know Captain Smith does not like boiling hot dogs, even though he does a fantastic job. Grilled would be a little bit better. I'll leave that one alone. The Nova baseball fields are in great shape. We've been out there a lot lately. When the rain has not been present. And just the comments that we get of the condition of the fields, thanks to Commissioner Tolland's leadership on adding the dedicated mileage rate for leisure services and having that applied this year to redo those fields. Look forward to hopefully having some tournaments and bringing outside people in to enjoy our The reports, I know Ms. Bryt about the reports, they're not a year behind, they're only a couple of months behind on the website I looked. June of 2024 was the last one, just a little correction for the record. Excuse me. I also saw the county yesterday and I believe on Daytona Beach's agenda is Avalon Park, they're approving the traffic plan for that development, so I think we need to see where we are, providing water, sewer, where the city stands on that. I just, maybe an update coming forward, because I know that it seems like this project is, it's a go. And then in the future, I know that last week we bid out or approved the insurance and saved the city money on that large contract. And potentially next year, maybe look at Yellowstone. I know, as the mayor said, it's certain ones you have to be careful on because you don't know what vendors are out there. However, the Yellowstone contract is approaching $2 million and I think that large of a contract, maybe it is time to maybe explore. I mean, they do a great job, but maybe we just need to look at that option for our residents to make sure that we're getting the best deal for the taxpayers' money. And my last thing is that October first, the new law went into place where it is now illegal in Florida to sleep on sidewalks and parks, on beaches, or other public spaces. So just wanted to let everyone know. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner and Commissioner Tolland?
Thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, they had the coastal cleanup all around and I think some of you all participated in different ones. I was up at Tom Rennick Park and I was just really amazed that what I picked up the most were those little plastic straws to juice boxes. They were absolutely everywhere, in every seaweed thing there was. So, you know, there's nothing we can do about it right now but to educate. But anyway, I thought that was an interesting observation. Baseball fields are absolutely gorgeous. Played tennis up at the Nova Rec and driving in, my daughter hasn't been there in a while, looked over and said, wow, these things look great. So kudos to Leisure Services for getting those done and just how beautiful they are. Congrats to the police department for all their promotions and all their swearing ins. What I wanted to just say mostly was that I really applaud the whole police department for creating an environment of a caring family atmosphere. And it's very evident when you go to these functions and you're, and each officer is lifting up, sometimes in a very sarcastic, comical way, but they're still lifting up each other and you can just tell that they really care about each other. National Night Out was amazing. I think the venue of Rockefeller Gardens as opposed to Nova Rec was, is the right choice and I hope that that continues over at Rockefeller. It was spread out nice. I will come back, so this Friday is the Heart Walk and I do want to thank those that have donated to the American Heart Association. I know, and I'm gonna give you a free pass to all of those that in your heart really wanted to walk, but I also know that we have conflicts and schedules. We have the Trunk or Treat with the Community Night Out hosted by Realty Pros and I'm sure there's other events going on, so I'm personally going to give you a free pass to not walk that night. But if anybody wants to walk that night, I will meet you at the, after you go through, there's the entrance exit where the beginning and the end of the race is. I will be there and I will walk that with whoever shows up. You can always make donations anytime through the American Heart Association. Tomorrow, I mean, not tomorrow, I'm sorry, Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at the E.D.C., Volusia County, particularly Troy Kent, will be celebrating Native Plant Month, which is November. So I'm really glad that he is embracing that and bringing attention to native plants. And also an update that Planning Department and Kara, our landscape architect, is accepting public input on round two of their landscape ordinance changes and that will be held at 2:00 on October eighth in room 103. So if anybody is interested in the updates or has information they want to present or comments they want to make, this is when the public is invited to make their recommendations. And I really applaud staff for going through this process, gathering the public input and you have those that are environmentalists speaking as well as developers that may not be as much environmentalists, to crazy commissioners, to everybody else. And they're taking all of our input and are gonna come back to the planning board and then to us later in the year, or actually, beginning of 2025, I think. So anyway, thank you for the process and thank you and everybody, have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner and Commissioner Sargent had one more announcement.
I forgot it. There's the fishing tournament for the kids Saturday. I'm sorry, Robert, I can't believe I forgot that. I'm hoping the sergeant boys take first place.
Which one is, is this the river?
This one at the river.
Okay. Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you all. I think you've pretty much covered everything. The Heart Walk, I can tell you, we have started a massive search in my house for the T-shirt that you gave me. Commissioner Tolland, I know I have it somewhere.
I'll give you a pass.
We will find it and I'm gonna try to be there. And then you brought up Realty Pros. They do an incredible community appreciation night. That's Friday evening and that'll be a huge crowd as well. National Night Out, I think I pretty much covered that at the beginning of the meeting. Just incredible spirit there and seeing the young people interacting with our police officers and firefighters, that's what it's all about, really, making those introductions. I saw one young lady, I think she's fifteen, interested in law enforcement and engineering. At that age, anything's still possible, I guess, but she took, one of the younger officers in the department took the time to talk to her a little bit about what's involved in becoming a police officer, how you can get involved with the cadets, all the different programs that we have. And so I was thrilled to see that, the community involvement, the businesses that came out and supported the event. Outback was giving away entire free meals. I was blown away by that, healthy as well. So, yeah, it was really wonderful. And then Deputy Mayor, the event today and Commissioner Tolland was there as well from Halifax, we're lucky to have incredible healthcare organizations in our community, whether it's Advent or Halifax. But Dr. Fieser, Robert Fieser, who is a vascular surgeon, spoke about the complex aortic aneurysms that they treat in a way that is non-invasive. You know, people who normally would be in the hospital for a week or ten days and then go home and take six to nine months to recover before they actually felt back to being themselves, are home the next day after having the non-invasive surgeries. That's incredible. Dr. Kana, who's an incredible cardiologist, spoke as well. And then Dr. Bender, who is a chiropractic and pain management doctor focusing on using non-opioid ways to treat people and prevent pain, really, really impressive. Halifax is our community hospital, if you will, and the amount of personable and professionals that work there is just wonderful for our community. You can go to their website, learn more about all the different things that they're doing. They have some incredible state-of-the-art equipment that very few hospitals in the entire nation have and Halifax has it. So it was great to learn about that and thank you to them for offering that and thank you, Commissioner, for being able to be there to experience that. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.